I call the meeting to order and welcome everyone. Even though it's not on the agenda, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible)
Okay, with the exception of Mrs. Denault, who's excused today, all members of the town council are here. In addition, Town Manager Cliff Gravier is here, and Will Wharton, our IT person. Before we do, announcements aren't on the agenda, but I'm going to take liberty here before we get into the meeting. Last night, the lifeguards had a competition down at Bethany Beach. There were ten patrols represented from the coast here, and number, there were two who were tied for fourth place, Sea Colony and North Bethany; third place, Dewey Beach; second place, Sussex Shores; and first place, not surprisingly, was Bethany Beach.[86.61][86.61](applause) So we have the best lifeguards around, and we owe it all to Lee, who was a predecessor lifeguard here.[97.11][97.11](laughter) But if you, when you see the lifeguards, please congratulate them. They're under great leadership with Captain Joe Donnelly. Okay, so with that, we will begin the meeting. There's one item on the agenda. This special meeting was called with less than seven days' advance notice, and Mr. Gravier checked with our solicitor, and was something we could do. It's something that is urgent, given the fact that we only have two weekends left, really, with the crowds that we usually have, in order to conduct this pedestrian study. So the discussion, and Mr. Gravier will explain in more detail what it's about. So the item on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and possible vote to approve a contract submitted by the traffic group to conduct an overarching pedestrian and bicycle safety study for the town of Bethany Beach, and the cost of the study is $167,000. Mr. Gravier.
Mayor, Council. You have a proposal, a contract, with a little bit of detail as it relates to locations, but certainly not the number, the complete number of counts and the types of machine that will be used for counts for both pedestrian and traffic, and also the personal observation. It's quite a, quite a package, if you will. The town in 2005 had a very, very thorough analysis done. It was really a large collection of data, and from that collection, that was funded by the Delaware Department of Transportation at that point in time, and cost the DelDOT approximately a quarter million dollars, there were a number of recommendations, many of which have been followed, some of which we have yet to follow, and some of the initial work there also discussed, if we were truly interested in doing something that would aid pedestrian traffic, especially east of Route One, that we consider, for instance, the possibility of making Atlantic and Pennsylvania one-way streets. There were a number of other recommendations, less drastic, that we have followed over the course of time. We know, as time has gone on, that the number of vehicles, the number of bicycles, the number of pedestrians we have in the community continues to grow. In every election cycle, we have the number-one issue that, that people address, the thing that's the most topical in every election cycle, is pedestrian, pedestrian-bicycle safety, how people can move around our community in a safe way. We have talked for a number of years about different spot issues, and one of the things that's become apparent over the course of time is that there would be a benefit to having an overarching study, an overarching look at how pedestrians, cyclists, how traffic moves in town, with a list of recommendations that would be a bit more detailed and in sync with today. The 2005 study offered a lot of minutia, but not a lot of substantive issues in terms of recommendations on the installations of sidewalks here and there, pathways, so on and so forth, and the data, obviously, from 2005 is really, really, really dated. In addition, with the infrastructure, major infrastructure bill that's been passed, the first bill that's been passed, and I don't know what's contained in the, in the second proposed bill, there is what's called SS4A, and it comes from the United States Department of Transportation. And SS4A is the part of the infrastructure bill that will be guiding the approximate $5 billion set aside for enhancements for safe streets and safety for pedestrians and cyclists. That will be the overarching document there, the word of the day. And that requires an action plan of some detail in order to submit requests moving forward for monies from that bill. One of the side benefits from this study, other than the recommendations we'll receive on things we can actually work on, is the fact that most of the work for an action plan will have been done as part of this project. The project has a total cost of $167,000. It has over 25 different locations for areas to be monitored for both pedestrian counts, bicycle counts, traffic counts, and it will be completed, if you will, hopefully, the counting portion of that will be done in August. One of the reasons we moved ahead with this, shortened the notice cycle for the meeting, and wanted to get this done. We have been in discussions with the traffic group for, for quite some time, and we were reaching the end of the summer, and we had a real need, if this was going to be a valid study, to do these counts in the next two to three weeks. So that's why we've moved ahead quickly, and that's what you have here. We have sole sourced this from our office's perspective because of the bona fides of the traffic group. They are a company that does exclusive traffic engineering studies. They've done a good bit of work in the area, and they are, they come very well-recommended. They are, again, the only sort of company, I think up and down the East Coast, that does nothing but these types of traffic studies for government, state, local, and county governments.
My understanding is that they have experience in preparing these action plans for submittal to the Department of Transportation for the grants?
They are actively involved with and have a number of their retired, number of their personnel, our former Department of Transportation members, if you will. Another benefit and a reason for the sole source is they have, one of the executives in their company is, is based out of this area and has responded here a number of times, and will actually be involved in the counts.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gravier. Do I have a motion on the floor to consider this item?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, discussion?
I have a question. This is a pretty sizable request, and I find it interesting that this traffic group also charges us for...
The traffic group also charges us for travel back and forth, you know, from Baltimore, I guess, that we're coming from. Is that typical? I mean, would you have something of this size? I believe so, but as I mentioned in, in the sole source issue, is that one of their executives lives in Berlin, so, and, and that person has already been on-site with us, met with us, and will be involved with the counts. I would imagine, again, that, that sort of travel is part and parcel of a, of a project like this.
Mr. Shepley?
Is there any way to know or to estimate what the possible, if we're successful in being awarded grants, what that may cover of this $167,000?
I don't know that we'll be compensated back for the grant development, but what comes from this study will be project recommendations. For instance, would we want to do something a little bit different in terms of the construction on South Pennsylvania, North Atlantic? If, if what comes of this are recommendations, again, that make those roadways more safe, again, I think we would be, the benefit comes from having that study done and being able to make those applications. Is there a benefit to a sidewalk on the north side of the park, going to 26 and a crosswalk? The construction for that, and that sort of work? But compensation back for this? No.
Okay.
There, there was a process where we could have tried to create an action, a request for an action plan and have it funded, and been compensated for the cost of the action plan, but that would have seen construction in any projects in the 2004, 2005 timeframe, because you would submit that in the fall, they would award it in the spring, and then you would be in another cycle for next fall when you submitted your action plan. So you would be looking at five or six, calendar year, five, six, four, five, or six, before you were eligible for any projects.
Thanks. I think you may have covered this, but is, is this already in the budget?
Yes.
No, this will come from, from our reserves. We have more than adequate reserves to cover it, and we'll do a supplement to the budget for this.
Right. I, follow-up on that question. I reviewed the budget with Janet and looked at all the monies and the reserves and so forth, and we have adequate money to cover this particular topic. I guess the only question I have, Wendy, is, obviously, we have a lot of estimates on other projects we have coming forward, and as long as everything stays within, you know, certain bounds, we're, we're, we're going to be able to cover all that, so it shouldn't be a problem.
The largest project we have pending right now is Collins Avenue, and the, the entire cost for Collins right now will be covered by, by grant monies we have received.
That's all.
The ARPA money, which is $600,000, the RT&amp;T money that we've collected from the county, from our grant request, there is $300,000. That covers just about the...
The whole amount.
The estimated cost, and the 200-plus that we've received from Representative Gray for probably what would be overruns would also be, be part of that. So that's more than covered. The only other substantive thing that's really pending right now is the land spit at Lake Bethany, and we have the resources to cover that. So if you're thinking, if you're looking at Collins and looking at that $900,000 number, thinking that we'll be short-tripped, it will, won't.
We won't have that problem.
Yes.
That's awesome. And I assume that possibly would free up some money to do some of these projects that might come along as a result of this study?
Yes. And, and the greater hope here is that some of this qualifies, again, for, if not SS4A, some other, some other source, some other grant money that might be available for pedestrian and bicycle safety.
Another question. The parts of the traffic study that are outside the corporate limits of Bethany Beach, are they being funded by the other coastal communities?
No, they are not. The, that work is approximately $39,000 in cost. Bethany Beach has the, the largest span on Route One. It also has the, the most people and the most intersections to measure and to count. Sea Colony is remarkably fortunate to only have one major intersection they need to worry about controlling, and it's controlled very well. Middlesex and Sea Colony don't have much of an issue, and South Bethany doesn't have any of the type of problems that we have with the number of people we have crossing and the number of events we host during the summer that bring people across Route One. So with all that in mind, and the fact that we added Route 26 to our speed request, we just went ahead and processed this ourselves, as opposed to getting involved in, in trying to figure out what portion each community should pay, and if they would pay, and whatever their political process would be to have that happen, we went ahead and committed now, again, to have it done this August.
And just to clarify, that Route One study and Route 26 study is, we've been working with the DelDOT to try and get the speed limit lowered to 30 miles an hour from the north end of Bethany Beach to the south end of, South Bethany, and this study is part of that, what, what DelDOT requested, and then also get it lowered, hopefully, on Route 26 to 30 miles an hour as well.
DelDOT required some study be prepared, and I don't think any of us here had the technical expertise to put together the type of...
There's very detailed information about stoplights, crosswalks, and a number of pedicycle accident spots. Is that just a bicycle? Another word for a bicycle?
I think it's a pedestrian slash, pedestrian slash bicycle accidents.
Okay. They, they specifically identified pedestrian accidents as pedestrian, but there were a lot of pedicycle. Just assume that it's bicycle?
Combination.
Most of the...
Of what?
Of pedestrian and bicycle.
I've always assumed in reading it's pedicycle. If you want, I'll make sure that I clarify that.
Okay.
I think most of the contract is actually to define pedicycle. That's where all the hundreds...
There have been a number of cases where bicycles actually hit pedestrians.
There, there are a lot, if you look at that map of identification of pedicycle accidents.
That, that almost happened right here, coming into this place, by the way.
When they're looking at their cell phones. I, Mr., I have one question. How were these streets chosen? Because I noted, was it basically on the busyness? Because I noticed, like, Fourth and Fifth and Ocean View weren't included, those things.
The traffic group submitted a list of streets they thought would be, the ones that would be the most significant for their, their plan. Then that was reviewed by the police department, and changes were made based on conversations between the police department and the traffic group on, on counts and, and other locations.
Anybody else on council?
Yes, I do have one other question. Mr. Kilmer had mentioned that there are other costs, or maybe other costs involved, such as travel expenses, that aren't covered in the $167,000, and I believe in one of the letters or, or the cover to the contract, it mentions those. Is there a ceiling on those costs built into the contract? Do we have any idea of what they may be? I mean, I would hate to see an approval for a contract for $167,000 and then find out there's $167,000 of out-of-pocket expenses on top of it.
There's not a cap on it, but those travel costs are related to the traffic counts that are going to be done over the next two to three weeks, and that's essentially the end of it. The rest of that will just be, there won't be travel costs associated with it. So it's them bringing their machinery, setting their machinery, monitoring the machinery, and then returning to Baltimore over the next two to three weeks. And I don't, and I don't have a cap on it.
Do you think it's safe to assume, then, that these additional costs on top of the $167,000 will be relatively small?
I believe that, in my conversations with the traffic group, I believe they're minimal.
Thank you.
Any other councilperson? Anybody in the audience? Please, yeah, please use the microphone and state your name and address, please. Yeah. We want to be sure we get you on the record.
My name is Bill Ziegler. I live in, at 849 Glen Court in Bethany, and I've been here for 20 years plus, so I've seen the traffic congestion build. And the question, the first thing I had was a comment, a question on pedicycle. Perhaps it's to define it from, that you pedal a bicycle compared to a motorcycle or a motor scooter, or even these motorized skateboards going on. That's what I think it might be. It's a generic grouping of, of things, vehicles you pedal. I, I have two thoughts or questions. First is the sudden sense of urgency at last minute to, to come up to have to spend $167,000 to $200,000 without any real deep involvement, obviously, from the community, because of, you know, this weekday, summer, et cetera. The other thing is, I'm not sure what the aim is to accomplish. I think that's the real question. What's the aim to accomplish? We're not going to reduce the traffic in Bethany. We're going to double it in the next 10 years, probably. So what, what is the aim to solve it? And part and parcel with that, do we have a safety problem now? And when I say safety problem, how many motorized vehicles have been involved in an accident in the last X number of years? I don't, you know, whether you go back five years or 10 years or whatever. How many personal injuries have been involved, and how many deaths have there been involved? And if those things are not a major factor, I don't see a sense of urgency having too many people. I, I don't know what we can do about that. I think there are great ideas. I never heard this route, I mean, this one-way, each-way there, and off the cuff, whatever, that sounded great. But if you look into it, I'm sure there's a reason why it's not good, so, but I think there's a lot of ideas, but the main problem is we can't solve the traffic. So do we have a safety issue?
The, the reason, from my perspective, and why it's been brought to the council, and I believe it's something the council is aware of, is that whenever we deal with other issues regarding transportation, be it pathways, be it intersections, we, we are often told that we are looking at things in a piecemeal way, and often citizens want to know why we're not taking a, a look at the entire, the entire problem the town has. And yes, the traffic's the problem, but our real problem are the pedestrians and cyclists that have to deal with the, the 30,000-plus cars a year that travel on Route One on a, on a daily basis, the 20, 13,000 that travel on a daily basis on Route 26, and all the people we have crossing these different intersections. We have been very fortunate. The questions that you're asking are the same things that DelDOT asks when we talk about reducing speed limits and putting stoplights in. They tell us, well, essentially, you haven't, no one's been killed. But I think what there's a feeling here for is trying to make sure that doesn't happen. I don't think you can travel up and down Route One. I don't think you can walk up and down Collins or travel on Atlantic or Pennsylvania on any given day in the summer and not think we're fortunate that we don't have a lot more in the way of pedestrian accidents, cyclist accidents, and vehicle accidents. So do we have staggering numbers? No, but we do have an issue with pedestrians and cyclists, and the area continues to grow. How can we best, best lay out the community? What can we do to make sure that we don't have problems going forward? My thoughts, and I don't know how the council feels.
And to your question about whether or not this has been discussed before, it has been mentioned before, and the latest time was at the June council meeting, when Mr. Gravier said that he was going to have a comprehensive townwide pedestrian and bicycle study done by a professional firm. And I believe that it was part of a response, too, to Patrick McGuire, and the BBLA board also received a copy of that. So it's, it has been talked about. I think also BBLA and the town have pedestrian and bicycle safety committees, just because it has been something that has been brought forth. And the man on, one of the people who live on Pennsylvania Avenue has, for years, asked us to make Pennsylvania Avenue one-way, because he sits on his front porch and watches all these people nearly killed every day. And it's something that, that might be a consideration in this, but I think we need to have the study done in order to be able to verify that. That may be a recommendation that comes from them. I think it was a recommendation that came from the JMT study back in 2005.
That was a recommendation from JMT, the quarter-million-dollar, the quarter-million-dollar DelDOT study. Anything the town generally moves to do regarding, regarding sidewalks, streets, pathways, one of the things that always comes of any discussion, the public discussion, is the councils ask, well, what study recommends this? Who recommends this? Where did the interest from this come? And I think what this, this plan should give us, this study should give us, is the ability to go back and say, well, these are some recommendations, professionals have done this, they've taken a look at how we can safely move cyclists and pedestrians through the community, and this is how we should do this moving forward. And I think it gives us, again, some goals to, to, again, make the community more safe. But to your point, do we have an abnormal number of accidents, pedestrian, cyclist, traffic accidents? No, but we've been very fortunate that we don't.
It's something that we're trying to prevent. And I think, as you know, as the town gets more crowded with people coming in from out of town, more, more vehicles, but also more people in town are riding their bikes to the beach, and we're having a problem. You can see at the beach ends, too, there are so many bicycles at the beach ends now, and a lot of people just don't use their common sense when they're traveling on Route One or Route 26. And we have an awful lot of people now crossing Route 26, from 26 across Route One on the north side, and that doesn't have any kind of a crosswalk. So this study will be something that we'll go into, seeing if there's a safer way of doing that, and some of the other streets as well.
If you look at the, and we just mentioned it quickly, and it's mentioned here in the cover page of the, the study proposal from the traffic group, but 30,000 vehicles a day on minimal increases during the season on Route One, 13,000 vehicles a day on Route 26 and increases during the season. And in the traffic study we mentioned from 2005, the engineering company that conducted that study, which had done extensive work throughout Delaware, counted over 30,000 people crossing Atlantic Avenue at Garfield Parkway in a 12-hour period on a summer Saturday. So 30,000 pedestrians out and about, 30,000 cars up and down Route One, 13,000 on 26, all plus numbers. I just, and in a community that never had any layout for sidewalks or pedestrian or cyclist transportation, I think, I think the, the need is obvious, so.
And, and in addition to that, the use of motorized bikes and skateboards and scooters, you see more and more of them all the time, and they, they go down a pretty good clip.
Yes, they do.
And, and they can't stop on a dime, so it's, that's another reason I think these studies would help.
Mr. Gravier, in your opinion, is what, can you compare this study with what was studied in 2005? I mean, are they comparable?
No, I think 2005 was an incredible exercise in accumulating data. I think if you go to the deliverables here, that it's much different and, and much more usable in terms of considering how we want people to move and bikes to move, and what kind of design improvements we might be able to make here throughout the town. This is, will be more substantive. I think in one of the packets I sent was another plan they had done for another community, and that was just a segment of the plan, and it was very practical, very everyday, common things that we could do almost immediately to make the town a safer place for bikes and pedestrians.
So it'd be 167,000 to get something that's more substantive and usable than a quarter of a million dollars?
More, more practical.
Yeah.
And that was 2005 numbers, too, that quarter million, so.
Oh, to, to add to what you've been saying, and looking at the information that you gave you, there have been 10 pedicycle accidents in the last three years.
No, it's three years.
Yes. Eight, well, two of them were in 18, 19, 21, 20, 22. There's been several, so it's, it's not like it, it doesn't happen.
And luckily, no deaths.
Well, there was one fatality, but it was...
Down in South Bethany.
It was down in South Bethany.
Yeah.
Can I, I just note on that, that I think, as Mr. Ziegler pointed out, and actually Mr. Gravier pointed out, that what we need is the information. So the study will give us the information that you're, that you're talking about, and it, it's entirely possible, other than that likely, that the report will say you guys are fine, it's all going to be great, don't do, don't make any changes, and then that'll be a $167,000 piece of paper. But I think, I think this is intended to give you the information to answer a lot of the questions that you brought up.
Mayor, just to iterate one point, and we spend money every year on traffic, on fixing roads, sidewalks, and all that stuff, but from my view, we're never really sure we're doing the most important thing first, and I think that's the whole idea, we get the whole picture, and then we put the money where, where it needs to go. And we don't have, I don't think, I don't have the big picture of the whole town, and I think this gives us the data for that.
And hopefully, if we have something like this, we can apply for grants, too, use it as a basis for grants to do some of the project work if needed. Does anyone else have anything? Okay. You had your hand raised first.
Lee? Ron?
Ron. And then Lee.
I'm Ron Kaliff, 308 Barkwood. As a biker, I'd see, I, I've wholeheartedly support this, I see it. You know, in the summer, we get so many, so many bikers, and now, like you were just discussing, the electric bikes, and, and I don't know what it, call some of these other ones scooters and whatever, they're zipping right along, very few safety steps are taken, you don't see a lot of helmets on. The kids just take it for granted, very much so for granted. And they're just, it's scary to see them zipping along on 26 and on Route One, especially because they don't pay attention to what side of the road to be on, they don't pay attention on being on sidewalks. Totally, it's, it's a hard one to, to address, but I think a good study could probably at least help us out some. My other question is, what is the timeframe? I, I understand that we're doing this in three-week timeframe, three- or four-week timeframe, taking the readings and, and looking at the, the statistics, but is there a timeframe for putting out a, the results and the recommendations of this study?
Most of the data will be completed, an initial set of recommendations will be completed in four to six months, and the entire project will be completed within 11 to 12 months, which is in sync with our need for submissions with the SS4A grants.
So we'll get some sort of a reading during the winter, those preliminaries?
Well, compiled, compiled, done with data collected during the summer, yes.
Okay.
So the next three to four weeks, they're collecting data. So the next three to four weeks, they're collecting data, and they promise a product, initial product within the next four to six months, and then a final product within ten to twelve months.
So does that mean that we're looking for statistics that will give us recommendations that may be implemented next summer?
That's possible, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
That's enough to me, yeah.
Mr. Bunting?
Hi, I'm, uh, Lee Bunting. I'm a resident of town, live at eighty-four North Atlantic Avenue. Um, a lot of my questions have been answered, but I, I also have a, a paper, and I'd like to, for these to be submitted into the, or read into the record of, of my questions at the end. Since I bike daily all over Bethany Beach, um, I'm very concerned about the biking safety, and I certainly do support, uh, the study, uh, in terms of, of getting information. My first question here was about the urgency of, of the meeting, and I, I think you answered that. Basically, am I correct in saying that you want to get the counts done before the summer season ends?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, uh, do you have a statement of work or scope of study to share with the public that the traffic group submitted? And I guess you do. Uh, and is this document available for the public?
It, it should be on the website, and if not, uh, I can get you a copy today, if you'd like.
Okay, can I have a copy today for you, Lee?
Sure.
Okay. Getting plans and, among other things. But specifically, what data is being studied, what streets, what intersections, uh, and what topics of interest will be addressed? And basically, I think, as somebody else said, what are the deliverables? What is the town looking for?
So the deliverables are listed, uh, in the proposal, and just to, to, uh, let me go over them. Uh, conduct a field visit to collect information, conduct vehicular turning movements, uh, in, I'd say about sixteen different areas, conduct a ten-day directional and classification machine count encompassing, uh, two summer Saturdays at the filing locations, that's about nine or ten locations, provide a summaries of the counts, build a model of the study area using SIM traffic, uh, simulators, provide level of service, service analysis for the study intersections, obtain analysis crash data in the study area, develop an alternative roadway improvement to enhance pedestrian and bicycle safety while maintaining vehicular traffic flow, evaluate alternative roadway improvements using the SIM traffic simulator, providing alternative recommendations for review and comment, develop conceptual plans for the preferred recommendation improvements, and develop cost estimates for the preferred, recommended improvements. So those are the deliverables. The first one through ten we'll have in four to six months, and eleven and twelve we'll have in ten to twelve months.
Great, I, I look forward to reading those. I couldn't catch them all as you, as you ticked them off there, so I, I look forward to reading that. Um, I, I think I've, I've made it known before that some of my concerns, uh, as well as a lot of other people, are the intersections of Garfield and Atlantic and Garfield and Pennsylvania, and also Collins and, and Wellington. And, um, I guess those sites will be addressed in this study?
Uh, there's a, a lengthy list of, of sites they'll be looking at. They'll be doing a lot of work east of Route One. Uh, for the speed study, they'll be doing a number of counts from Fred Hudson all the way to the southern, uh, border of South Bethany. Uh, they'll be doing multiple locations on Route Twenty-Six also, and intersections on Route One. So a lot, a lot of data will be collected.
And just to clarify, Collins and Wellington and Kent were, was a separate project that we-
I know, yeah.
-that had already been done, and we're in the process of doing final sketches on those.
Good, good. Um, we're always concerned about safety, but the, downtown and Atlantic, at Garfield and Pennsylvania and Garfield, it's, it's about safety as well, but it's also about what I think called the character of the town. If you go down there and, and watch, which I do sometimes, especially at the very busiest times, you see parents that have fright on their face because their kids may take one step out. You see senior citizens freeze when, you know, a car comes around a corner. Uh, you see teenagers flip off somebody because they go in front of somebody and somebody yells at them. It's just not the type of character of the town that I think we want to promote. And I think that, you know, it's the traffic that's causing this type of, uh, behavior. It's very unsettling, and it, it doesn't even look like, you know, what I call Bethany Beach. It looks like the city. Uh, and I've long been a proponent of crossing guards or, or people, you know, people that do that type of work. It just seems to me to spend a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars, that's a, and I've always been told that we don't have the time, we don't have the training, blah, blah, blah. A hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars would go a long way towards, uh, doing something like that. Okay, um, that's what I just wanted to say. Also, it's been suggested this study will help attain government grants. Can you be more specific? What type of grants are you looking for? I think someone really asked that question, and I don't know if we got a, a, a good clarifying example. We're going to spend a hundred and sixty seven to get what in general terms?
Well, one of the things that this should give us are possible projects that will enhance safety. Things that I, I would offer as the manager, having been here a number of years, is something that might work positively, maintain the character of Bethany Beach for North Atlantic and South Pennsylvania. And those would be massive projects. The problem in North Atlantic, as you know, our homes are built very, very close to the roadway. In any attempt to create walking pathways or a safe place for people to bike or walk is going to be very difficult. That's going to require some imagination and a lot of cost. South Pennsylvania, to make South Pennsylvania safe, there would be no trees in South Pennsylvania. Talk about character for the town. I think we all look at South Atlantic, I think we're happy with South Atlantic in terms of safety, but at the end of the day, is that keeping the, the character of Bethany Beach? And could we do something different on North Atlantic and South Pennsylvania? And that will cost money. Would we want a sidewalk, again, that, that runs down Twenty-Six on the north side of the park? And, and we, we want that intersection enhancement, and Del Dot will want us to pay for that. So those are large things that come to mind, along with our hope that we pick up some additional stoplights on Twenty-Six, and some, some consideration for another stoplight on Route One, things that we would have to bear the cost for.
Um, I'd like to add to that. Um, could you ask the source of these grants?
No, I didn't ask the source. I said the, we're going to spend a hundred and sixty seven thousand to get what? What type of grants are we going to get?
Well, this one-
Well, I mean, I know it's from the federal government, but what, what's the scope of those grants?
Right.
Could you give me a, a, an idea of something that you've been thinking about? If we were successful in the grant?
I, I think I just, I think I just did, Mr. Bunting.
Well, could you do it again? I didn't understand it.
Sure. I, we, we talked about, uh, creating some enhancements for North Atlantic, South Pennsylvania.
Enhancements? What are enhancements?
We don't know yet.
Well, we, we don't know. I mean, so this, so-
Okay.
Somebody's going to have to tell us how, how he can do it.
So you're not really, you're not really sure what, what you want, but you want some information to make a decision?
Well, I have an idea what I would like, but I, I would like to hear what the, uh, the, the traffic group has to say with, about it, and that would just simply be my opinion. My opinion for North Atlantic-
Well, I think your opinion may, weighs a lot in this town.
Well, I, I think-
And so I'm, I'm just asking you what kind of-
Sure, sure, sure.
Things would you like?
Sure. I, I think some consideration of making North Atlantic and South Pennsylvania one-way and opening up the streets so we could have ten- or twelve-foot pathways on South Pennsylvania and North Atlantic for cyclists and, uh, and pedestrians without infringing on any property owner, without cutting back any driveways, and without taking down any trees in South Pennsylvania. But those are both massive reduces of the street, and those are my ideas, not the council's ideas. The idea of the sidewalk on Twenty-Six at the park, another my idea. So none of this has been vetted with the council, but those are things I think may come out of this or may not.
Okay.
I will go back to the JMT study in two thousand and five. JMT recommended, after they collected that massive data, that if the town had a real interest in pedestrian, interest in pedestrian and bicycle safety in east of Route One, that they would make all of Pennsylvania Avenue and North Atlantic a one-way street. And that completely, that died right away because of, of NIMBY. Uh, people came out of the woodwork, not on my street, don't do that, I don't want to drive a half a block down to, uh, the next street, and then that died. Maybe it comes back, and maybe there's more consideration for it.
Thank you, thank you. Um, the other sort of thing that I think the town has, has done a good job in, is that the, uh, summer expenses that are incurred are usually paid by the people that make those expenses, that, that, a general philosophy, correct? So recently, I met with Doug Hudson, our representative from the Sussex County Council, and we were speaking about the overwhelming growth in, in the county and what we can do about it, and, and the pedestrian bicycle thing came up. And we asked him, uh, if they would entertain, um, a grant for, for Bethany Beach to do some of this study. So I'm here to ask you, did you ask Sussex County to participate in this so that the town of Bethany Beach doesn't have to bore the full, full cost? And, um, so that, you know, others that are using our town bear some of those costs?
So, no, uh, I can tell you that I'm not aware of any grant process where we could ask the county for any money to assist us with this. I, I'm not aware of that.
Did you ask, have you asked them?
No, I've, I've not asked.
Okay, well, I suggest that you do because you might be able to get some money for it.
Okay.
That's my, I mean, um, yeah. And, and God knows, we need money back from Sussex County because they're ripping us off, in my opinion. Um, the last thing I have here, uh, and you've answered a little bit, but what can you tell me about the traffic group? Has the town done business with them before? Is this sole source funding? Was there a proposal submitted by another vendor? If not, why not? And how is this proposal designated to blend in with the town comprehensive plan that I think is due soon? And, um, and what's the status of that comprehensive plan?
The comprehensive plan is, is in the process of being worked on. Uh, this is a sole source from, from the traffic group. They're a professional services organization, and we have the ability to offer per our purchasing agreements, sole source to a professional services organization. They are the largest firm of its kind that do just traffic engineering in the mid-Atlantic region with over nine thousand completed projects. They have four thousand pieces of data collection equipment and over eighty people that work for them, many of them former, uh, NHTSA employees and Del Dot and Maryland Dot employees. Uh, they come very well-recommended, uh, and they have, again, uh, executives right in this area that can respond to us, uh, almost on a daily basis if needed.
Who were your recommendations from? Who'd you get recommendations from?
I, I'll have to go back to my office and get that for you. Uh, one of them was the former, um, Secretary of Transportation for the State of Maryland and for Montgomery County.
Okay. So we don't really know these people, I mean, other than you've met with them and so forth, would you? Okay. Um, finally, I, I would suggest that you table this until more public discussion and light can be shown on some of these documents and, and so forth. Spending a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars is, again, single source, is a lot of money. I, I know there's a deadline, and you're pushing up against that deadline, but that doesn't mean that we need to be penny foolish. So that's, uh, here's, here's my question should be read into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Bunting. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on council? We have a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Um, I think that's all for today. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.